And I hope, I invite Nick Zook-Suits.
I usually get Zooks, but Suits to be really precise.
Zooks S Asylum.
No, still, yeah, a little bit.
Okay. On non-voting item, sir, give us your name and where you're from, and you have five minutes to address the board on a non-voting item of your concern. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Nick. I'm from Solon, Ohio. I would like to do a little demonstration today. Imagine we are going back in time. We're at school. We're going to do a very short storytime. You probably noticed something was missing from my storytime. I just showed you some pictures. With no language, a story could not be communicated. This is the reality my daughter experienced in public school. She was born deaf. She uses American Sign Language to communicate. Storytime for her was just the pictures. We asked our local school district to provide my daughter with an interpreter. To my surprise, their administrator said no. Sign Language might be disruptive to other students' education. They might pay more attention to my daughter's interpreter than their classroom teacher. So, no, we don't want that here. We asked again. The district said that we needed data that proves this could be an IEP intervention. We asked again and again. They found different ways to say no. All the while, my daughter went to school with no language, with no adults around her to understand her requests or to explain to her what was going on. Later, we got some advocates to fight for my daughter's right to access her education. We got the local school district to reluctantly post an interpreter job for my daughter, but then no one applied. There is a shortage of educational interpreters that has been well documented for many decades in Ohio. We offered several alternatives that many other districts use in these instances, including finding substitutes, letting Ivy go to a neighboring district, and then finally, we asked for placement at Ohio School for the Deaf in Columbus. Their response to all of these alternatives was no. Solon's plan for my deaf child was to continue to go to school with no ASL interpreter. They told us to wait. We'll be getting an interpreter soon, maybe next month. Ivy is making great progress. Does she really need this? Are you sure she won't just start talking? Statements like these that were said to us are discriminatory against the deaf community and my daughter. Well, there is a second part to my demonstration from the beginning. While my daughter was at school looking at the pictures, I learned to sign these books. Ivy did not sit to look at the pictures at home. Now, Ivy and Dad, we could sign these stories. We could both understand. I did not want to waste years of language development for my daughter waiting, waiting on empty promises, and her being put in a situation where she was not understood by the adults around her and her peers. What I would like to ask of this board today is that you consider expanding parents' choice in deaf education. The Ohio Revised Code Section 3301-51-20 addresses the admission standards at Ohio School for the Deaf. It was recently up for public comment. I realize that I have missed the deadline for that. However, I still wanted to bring our situation to the board's attention. The shortage of educational interpreters has been well documented in Ohio. In our case, there was no interpreter, yet OSD placement was still denied. I realize most of what happens to individual students is decided at the district level, and there are remedies available to us under IDEA and through various state avenues. But I would still challenge this board to consider our case, a case where a student was left to wait for months with no sign language interpreter, a student who was profoundly deaf, using ASL with her family every day. Can the school, can the School for the Deaf have authority to consider placement when parents desire placement but the local school district declines? Subsection three of this code outlines the remedies that the School for the Deaf has when they don't agree with placement at their school. Could there be, this could be a language lifeline for deaf students who are at the wrong end of the interpreter shortage, but when the district declines placement at Ohio School for the Deaf. What is the future of deaf schools when districts hold this kind of power? When ASL for these kids is denied, it is a form of oppression for a language minority, a student population that is far too small to make it into the test scores, but one that is a language minority and one that deserves protecting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zooks. Are there any questions? Board Member Johnson, and then Board Member Fessler.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank you for coming today. I have a couple of questions. First of all, when you asked for your daughter to be put in the Ohio School for the Deaf and you were told no, what was, what was the reason or what were the reasons that you were given?
I was given, I'd be happy to share the prior written notice that we received after the meeting. This IEP meeting occurred on September 27th. What they said in the prior written notice is that my daughter was making great progress without ASL services, a full-time interpreter.
Okay.
So, the school felt like their, their environment was the best place for my daughter.
Okay. And my second question. See, I'm not really sure how that happens, why the district would be responsible for making that decision. Does the district pay for the transportation? You're in Solon.
Correct.
And the school is in Columbus. So, would you be responsible for the transportation or would the district be responsible for the transportation?
Yeah, and I think this is where some of the challenge is for the district, because they are supposed to consider the needs of the child, but there is a financial implication to placing, to referring a child for placement at Ohio School for the Deaf. Even if I transported her, they would still have an obligation to reimburse me for the transportation expenses. Now, I transported my child over the summer to the summer camp at Ohio School for the Deaf. Every day for two weeks, my wife and I drove her, two hours each way. So, I was willing to drive her. She did great with the drive. I didn't want her to be in environment, in an environment where she was not, her request couldn't be understood, and what was happening around her couldn't be explained to her. So, we drove her down there.
Okay, I have one more. It's short. Thank you. Real short.
Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. If, could you withdraw her from Solon and enroll her in the Deaf School for the Deaf?
No, and that is the challenge that I want to bring before the board, because this is the, the part of the Ohio Revised Code, the local districts are the gatekeepers of the state school for the deaf. There's only 2,000 deaf students estimated in the entire state of Ohio, and I would argue that they, the local districts may not always be the experts when it comes to what's best for the child. And to be fair to them, you know, they told us that this was the first instance that they had a deaf preschooler, and they had overseen the education of a deaf preschooler at their preschool. They saw it as more of an IEP intervention, where we saw it as her access to, equitable access to her education.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Manchester, and then Ms. Fessler.
Thank you so much for coming, and it's, it's great that you're willing to do everything you can for your daughter, and especially at this early age, because you're right, this is a really formative and special time for her. I guess I'm wondering, was there, was there really, I mean, if she needs, if she is deaf, how can they deny that she needs an interpreter? And are you asking, I guess I'm wondering what you're asking of us. I wasn't real sure if you're wanting us to look into the law and how it's written. So, I'm just wanting to be a little more clear on what you're asking of us.
Thank you. So, I'm asking for the Ohio School for the Deaf to have some say in placement at Ohio School for the Deaf, because right now, placement is entirely up to the local district. She went to summer camp there at Ohio School for the Deaf. We got their, the summer camp instructor to write an observation report about how well she did there and how well she did using sign language. They had space there for her, and the epilogue to my story is that we've, we've, we have moved out of this school district and to a new school district that will allow her to go to Ohio School for the Deaf in January. But this is my advocating for other parents who are in the same situation, other parents who, where the local district is denying placement at Ohio School for the Deaf. They agree that the student needs an interpreter. There is an interpreter shortage. Could there be another avenue, another way to throw a language lifeline to these kids who are such a small language minority?
Could I have a follow-up, please?
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned, and I wasn't sure if it was the Ohio Revised Code law or if it was Ohio Administrative Code rule. Could you give me that number again and tell me which one it was?
Yeah, so this, I'm just an ED nurse here. I'm no lawyer, but I'm doing my best. So, Ohio Revised Code 3301-51-20. So, Ohio Revised Code 3301-51-20. And the beginning of another part of that code does say, "Subject to the regulations adopted by the State Board of Education, the State School for the Deaf shall be open to receive persons who are deaf, partially deaf, and residents of the state."
Thank you. Mrs. Fessler, and then Dr. Miranda.
I'll withdraw.
Dr. Miranda.
Yeah, just a question about the IEP. So, the interpreter as a related services was not written into the IEP?
I guess to get specific, the, I did ask that the IEP get rewritten at one point during the meetings. They, they said that that wouldn't be necessary, because they wrote it in prior written notices and still agreed to provide the service.
Okay, so, an interpreter was written into the IEP?
Mm-hmm.
So, you could have sued the district?
Well...
Because the IEP is a contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we really do want to advocate for her in this situation, and I'll keep telling, talking to whoever will, whoever will listen about it.
No, I agree. I agree, but to me, they broke the contract, because if the interpreter is written into the contract, the IEP is a contract.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I understand, and I think that's a part of the advocacy, is to understand they really broke the contract.
So, I guess one other thing if I could add, the Ohio Department of Education has interpreter guidelines that were last revised in 2011. There, there is not a framework in these guidelines that allows for what happens when there is an interpreter shortage. In our case, the district, what they had offered us in the end was an educational aide, someone who had knowledge of sign language, whose parents were deaf, but had no training, no experience, and no education to provide my daughter with this service. So, we said we were not uncomfortable, we were not comfortable with this person being the language model for our daughter, based on how they were hired. And I guess, not to go too far into it, but we asked for placement at Ohio School for the Deaf. And to go back at that time, September 27th, that placement was denied, and at that time, no interpreter was being provided.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's also interesting, because if the district can't provide the services, my understanding is by law, they have to find an alternative placement. So, to me, you were within your right to ask for Ohio School for the Deaf, for the Deaf, because that's what the law says, if the district can't provide that. Yeah.
Correct. And if I could just add, the main thing that I'm asking of this board is to consider that subsection three of this law deals with the remedy if the Ohio School for the Deaf disagrees with placement. So, they, they say that this child is not acceptable to be placed at our school. Then, the local district and the Ohio School for the Deaf, these superintendents get together, and if they can't agree in 20 days, then an administrator from the Ohio Department of Education gets to step in and help mediate this situation. That could have been a lifeline in our situation, because our remedies under the law otherwise take months to adjudicate and take a great deal of financial resources to fight back against a district who's a formidable opponent with retainers more than I make in a year.
Okay. Ms. Fessler, and then I'd like to invite to the podium Joanna Ward to address this for an educational purpose, so you can know exactly where we stand and what the options are. Ms. Fessler.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming, sir. Don't leave us. I need some help, probably from someone on staff. In years past, we had entities that were, the acronym was a CIRC Center. Does anybody remember what those initials, yes?
Well, fill in anything when I'm invited.
You'll go there?
Yes.
Yes. I just found them to be a godsend in situations like that. If they're still active, I hope they get connected. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mrs. Fessler. Joanna, would you please come to the podium?
Hi, I'm Joanna Ward. I'm the Director of the Office for Exceptional Children. So, thank you for bringing this issue to us today. What he is, his story, and then the questions that you're asking and what Dr. Miranda was saying is correct. So, if a student has an IEP and interpreter services are in the IEP, the district is required to provide what's in the IEP. So, that should be happening. There are also dispute resolution processes that any parent can apply to a situation in which the IEP is not being followed. So, we worked to provide lots of guidance and support to help parents through that process and help them get IEP facilitation or mediation or file a complaint if so necessary. So, we have lots of resources available for that as well. You think, you had lots of conversation pieces. The other part is, as far as admission to the school, to the schools, the state schools, I know he was reading from the 3301-51-20, Section 3, I believe, and that talks about if the school superintendent at one of the state schools does not accept a placement. But I think you have to go back a part in that law, because what it talks about is the placement is based on IEP team decision. So, it's not unilaterally a district decision, and it's not a parent alone decision. It is an IEP decision. And again, that would bring forth any dispute resolution processes in place if there's conflict at the, at the IEP team meeting on what's best for the student. And it should be based on the needs of the student and what's best for that student, so that they can access their education. That's exactly right. The other thing Dr., or Ms. Fessler was talking about was our CIRC Centers. So, the CIRC Centers have morphed into our state support teams. So, all the special education services and supports in regionally around the state are provided through our state support teams. So, there's a state support team who's available to help districts and to respond to parents and families.
Okay. We have a question by Mr. Dakin.
Thanks. And so, thanks for sharing that information, and thank you, sir, for being here. I can't tell you how disappointed I am to hear this story. But my question is for Joanna. Could you kind of give a set of timelines to when somebody would initiate a dispute resolution process? What kind of timeline typically would be needed in order for this to get to a resolution?
So, let me be clear. Are you asking, like, when, when would it start, or how long does it take?
How long does it take?
It depends on, on what the dispute resolution process is.
Sure.
So, if it's an IEP facilitation or a mediation process, we can respond to those pretty quickly. There are timelines in law about when we have to respond to things, as well as filing a complaint. If a parent files a complaint, there's timelines and laws in which we have to respond and reply and follow through on the complaint, reviewing the complaint.
Could, could you articulate those timelines in law?
I do not have all the timelines in my head. I apologize.
Can you give me a rough, can you give me a rough estimate?
Well, I think there's 30 days to initiate and respond, and then they, they have to, the team goes to investigate, right? Because we have to look at all the sides of what's happening in a complaint situation.
Right.
So, there's timelines for that. We can't spread that out forever. It can't be a six-month thing. There's a certain amount of time. It has to be kind of quick and efficient, and then gather enough of the information to make some determinations based on that complaint.
Yeah.
But it's not, it shouldn't be a long drawn-out process.
Right. But it's not a matter of a couple of weeks. It will take, it will take time, and meanwhile, this child doesn't get access, and that's...
Well, the district's required to provide education to the child.
That's the point of the dispute, though, right? If they're not.
Right. And I, and I like to add too, and I, and I, you know, speak for the families as well, that you've heard me say this before. A student with a disability is a student first, right? So, acceptance and support for that student to access their education is most important.
Are there any other questions of Joanna, Joanna? Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess, trying to put in layman's terms, the story you've heard from Mr. Zook and the process he went through, was there something?
Mr. Miller, do you mind speaking into your mic, please?
Pardon my back.
It's okay.
Is there, is there something in the, Mr. Zook's workflow that could have been done or should have been done by him? And not placing blame here, but I mean, he was in communication with not only the School for the Deaf, but his own school district. Where, can you speculate on what happened here? Why, why did we get to the point where he's here, begging for help when he didn't, and he had to move to get the help?
Well, speculation's always difficult, since I'm not personally there with them. However, at the, at the IEP team meeting, at the initial one, parents are given the Parents' Rights document and, and access to information about the due process and all of that. So, districts and the IEP team, when they first meet, are supposed to explain what the parents' rights are and what they have access to, and how they can file a complaint if so needed. So, that information should have been right up front. And then, you know, that causes me some concern too, like, what's, what's happening in that space on the district end, and what do we need to do as an office to better support districts to help make that happen?
Mr. Davis.
I'm sorry to interrupt. If I could just add to our situation, we, we did hire, we hired advocates to fight back, and we felt like things had degraded to the point where this wouldn't be the only battle that we had with this district over sign, sign language and the right to my daughter to access her education. So, we felt it was better for our family that we moved at that point. So, we didn't, to be fair to the Office of Exceptional Children, we did not bring them in until only recently.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you, President McGuire. Once again this month, I find myself residing in the new guy seat, so I reserve the right to ask a stupid question. It seems to me that if having a profoundly deaf student is a rarity in a district, it might not be a rarity in a county. And being familiar kind of with what ESCs do, they provide a lot of unique services that districts cannot. And I just wonder if that kind of service is not available at our ESCs. Maybe it should be. Maybe it's there, and I don't know that it's there. But does anybody know if that, that could be an avenue? I can't imagine driving, did you say two hours each way every day? I mean, that's moving mountains. And it would certainly serve the, the far reaches of the state if our ESCs could pick up this kind of a service more frequently than individual districts can.
Joanna, do, can you speak to that?
Yes, thank you, President McGuire. Typically, our, our ESCs do have related service providers, and interpreter would be one of those. I don't know the, the numbers, and it sounds like from what we're hearing from our parent here, that the numbers of available interpreters are very low. But, but that's where most of our districts go to get, to start that process, to find a service provider to provide that support. And our state support teams that I mentioned earlier are connected to education service centers, so they're connected.
Thank you. Mrs. Manchester.
I guess I'm wondering, one question is for Mr. Zooks. Are you happy with where your child is going to be come January, did you say? Are you, are you happy with that part of it?
Yes, certainly. She will be at Ohio School for the Deaf, January 3rd.
Okay. So, I guess my question to you, President McGuire, is what, what do we need to do? Do we need to look into this further as a board, or is it something that the Integrated Student Supports Committee should look into, so that this doesn't happen again? Find out what went on? That's my question.
Thank you for that question. I think I would direct to interim Superintendent of Public Instruction Sittings. I think this is a follow-up item, especially since we are responsible as a governing body for the superintendent of the schools of the deaf and blind. You want to address Superintendent?
Sure, President McGuire, members of the board, and thank you for coming to share your concerns and your story about your child. I, I would recommend, Ms. Manchester, that, so I'll speak with Joanna, and I do think it would be a good discussion for the Integrated Student Supports Committee, given we have gone through a number of rule reviews recently. I think it's just important for us to understand which relevant rules are pertaining to this particular situation. And then I think we could also discuss if it has a legislative impact. The Legislative Committee is coming up in, in the coming months. So, I think if we could do a little bit of research, and then we could talk with Dr. Kilgore from a committee chair standpoint on how the committee could discuss it further, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Mrs. Sittings. Any, Mrs. Fessler, are there any other questions besides Mrs. Fessler?
Mr. Zooks, my question is simple. In your ideal world, would you want your child in a local school with an interpreter with her, close to home, or do you see more value in having her in the School for the Deaf?
Thank you. That's such a great question. That's, so, there's, there's two ways that deaf children are usually educated. They are educated in state schools for the deaf, or they're educated with an interpreter. But there's sort of a third option, and there's one right here in Upper Arlington called like a, called like a consortium program, where deaf kids from different districts are allowed to be bused together. The challenge with these, these programs, which are great too, is that there's, there's only so many deaf kids, and one closed, there was a beach program in Beechwood, Ohio, that just closed because there's not enough students. They're not accepting new students to that program. So, it's hard for these programs to stay open. But I think if, if I could beg for another idea, it would be if there's just some way we could find a way to bus deaf kids together and let them be together and share resources. Because the mismatch between educational interpreters and deaf kids is always going to be there. We can't fix it. But the one way to fix it is to let them grow up and be educated together. It's a big dream, but, you know, if anybody could, you know, help a couple deaf kids, well, that would really make a big difference.
Follow-up, ma'am, Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't want to press you too hard, but if you only had two options instead of three, do you want your child near your home or here in Columbus?
I guess, given the, we've already made the decision at this point to move, so we'll be pretty close to the Ohio School for the Deaf. So, that makes the choice for complete immersion much easier.
Yes, okay.
If there was the commute involved, I think I would rather stay in Solon with an interpreter. And have her, have, you know, other members of the deaf community that we've connected with have told us stories about sign language club that their friends would have, and what a, what a great sense of community that can create, and how great that can be for all the learners in the school when, when kids are mainstreamed. But the shortage of educational interpreters makes that very difficult, and in a lot of cases, kids are on the wrong end of that, because there's just a great distance between everybody, and there's, it's a small portion of the population.
Thank you, Mrs. Fessler. Any other discussion? Mr. Zooks, where? Follow-up? Okay.
I just wanted to tell you how special I think you are. Your child is blessed to have you for a daddy, an advocate. Boy, if you could be multiplied, we'd have a better world. So, you're a good, good model for your other men on how to parent and fight for what's right for your child. And God bless you for it.
That's high praise. Thank you so much.
With that, we will conclude this discussion. Mr. Zooks, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I would like to sug- I would like to suggest to you to exchange information with Mrs. Ward behind you to inform this process through the interim superintendent. We will make this a discussion item with Dr. Kilgore's committee, the Integrated Student Supports, because every child, when we, each child means each child with us, and we want to be sure your daughter has the right resources, connection, and opportunities for success. Thank you very much.